Welcome to the regular meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners. Today's meeting is going to begin with our regular official meeting where we vote. And we'll take a little brief pause at the conclusion of that meeting and begin a briefing session for the meeting a week from today. Citizens who are interested in participating in the public portion of the meeting are going to be asked to give us a call and you can talk to, for three minutes and tell us what's on your mind, what problems, needs, and interests of all things that are going on. And I'd like to give you the telephone number now, and I'll repeat it so in case we're catching you by surprise, you can call us anyway. The number is 336-422-1200. They'll be placed on hold until the public session of the meeting begins, and that should be if we, if everything goes according to HOIL, about 15 to 20 minutes from now. Telephone number once again for the public session of the meeting where everybody gets at least three minutes to speak, the area code is 336-422-1200. Now, members of the audience today here at Government Center in Winston-Salem who are interested in participating in the public session that we've talked about, you need to at least fill out a speaker card, and those cards are available in the lobby just outside the door. Once you've filled those out, please take them as soon as you can to the lady at my right, that would be Ashley Sloop, and she is the clerk to the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners. The speaker card simply gives us an opportunity to keep this meeting in an orderly fashion. And once again, the speaker cards are in the lobby, and if you want to, you can get up in a moment and just go right on out, pick one up, and then give it to Mrs. Sloop. Dr. Christopher Old and Public Health Director, Dr. Joshua Swift will give a COVID update today, and that, as you all know, is on all of our minds for most of the time. Dr. Old and Joshua will begin in just a moment, but what I would like to do if we can is begin our briefing with an invocation from Pastor Tanberger Covington of the Ministers Conference of Winston-Salem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Fleming Leming. Please stand if you can, and Pastor Covington, you may begin when you're ready.
Good afternoon, Forsyth County Board of Commissioners, county staff members, and Forsyth County residents. I want to thank you for this opportunity to bring today's invocation. Let us take a posture for prayer. As we humbly come to you, God, we come with reverence to the great I am. You are our Father, you are our Mother, and you are our friend. And so we thank you for our opportunities individually and collectively. May the collective of your creation praise you for every day that is granted to us. And so we commit this meeting to you, and we deposit it into your charge, entrusting this meeting, the people who will hear and the people who will speak into your protection and care. We commend this meeting to your wisdom, oh God. We pray for your wisdom to govern amid the conflicting and unprecedented interest, health crisis, natural disasters, and issues of our time. We pray that you will guide our elected officials to have an ear to listen and a heart for all residents in Forsyth County. We pray that they will have the courage to elevate difficult conversations and make the decisions that will bring about change for the common good of all residents. And so we petition your guidance in making sure that the appropriate and needed resources are equitably dispersed throughout every neighborhood of this county. We ask you to inflame our passion for justice into the commitment to address unjust situations, unjust structures, and unjust systems. We reverse the prevailing distrust and restore hope. And may we find this peace that you give us that surpasses all understanding in the decisions that our elected officials make. May we always act in the spirit of justice. May we continue to pray to you and create a different environment where injustice is replaced with a renewed sense of solidarity and care. May God, you always be a place of protection for us and a residence of refuge. This is our prayer. In the matchless name of the Almighty One, in Jesus Christ we pray. Amen.
Amen.
As we mentioned earlier, Dr. Christopher Old and Joshua Swift from the Public Health Department will give us a COVID-19 update. And I know we're all interested in hearing that, especially with the good news and the bad news. Dr. Old, would you like to start?
If not... Sure, I can. Yeah, I'm here. Sorry, I was a little bit late, and sorry about the pandemic, apparently, when... It was the pandemic, literally. So, you know, I can let Joshua talk about our county numbers specifically, but I'll just give a little bit of an interpretation of them. Our rates are going up, but slower, and then slower than they were, and then slower than the counties around us. And I'm starting to get a little bit of a hint that we may be seeing a bit of a plateau coming in our future, but don't hold me to that, because if you do, I'll disavow I ever said it. But, yeah, they, so there's a few things that are helping. One is just the distinction of time, that this wave probably would last eight to 10 weeks, and we're kind of coming up on the halfway point. And then the other is that the mandates are helping, and daycares are starting to put masks back on, and with the city mandate, I think is going to help. And I applaud Mayor Joyner for having that now. And I think people are changing their behaviors a little bit. We are seeing more people get vaccinated, but it's a little too early for that impact on this yet. But that'll certainly help us as we get into the beautiful time, beautiful weather of fall. And so hospitalizations lag behind cases, and our hospitals are real tight right now. And it feels a bit uncomfortable. You know, I don't really think it's getting in the way of providing care for COVID patients or for routine care, but we're having to shift around some depending on which hospital and where is that, as to whether or not they have to put off some elective surgeries, you know, things that can be easily put out, like a joint replacement or something. But we certainly are not having to postpone any surgeries that are urgent or emergent. But what's hurting us most in the hospitals is not room to put people, it's in having staff, particularly nursing staff. And some of that's because of the nursing staff is, they're either been exposed or got a breakthrough infection or COVID. Most of them, it's an unvaccinated staff who's gotten an infection. And then the other aspect of it is that sometimes they have to stay home with a child who's been exposed. So breakthrough infections in our region, you know, are occurring, but I can tell you that what you hear all the time is true here in our hospital as well. Ninety-five percent or more of the patients who are admitted to our hospital with COVID are unvaccinated.
Hard to believe.
None of our patients on a ventilator have been vaccinated. They're all unvaccinated people. So the vaccines are keeping people largely out of the hospital. The few that do get admitted are immunocompromised or have a lot of other medical problems. And so I really do encourage vaccinations, and it's really important. And, you know, I'm trying to get the word out to people that it, and I appreciate the Commissioners' help, that it's not the government telling you to get vaccinated, it's not, you know, some big outside entity, it's not some pharmaceutical company. It's me telling people, I want you to get vaccinated because I care about it.
And you're a doctor.
And, yeah, I am. Yeah, I am. But, so, the other aspect is about, you know, boosters we can talk about later. Those are going to be a little while down the road. We are, we do want our immunocompromised people to come up and get their fair dose. We'll start doing that next week. And that will help them, because a lot of them didn't respond as well to two doses in the early days. And the, but I really think right now to get us through the next two to three weeks, and to help us out here in the hospital, that if we can get people to mask up, because a mask is the best substitute we have for having a fully vaccinated person. And wearing a mask will allow us to continue to do things that we want to do, like go to the fair, or go to a ballgame, or have our kids in school, you know, have a social event you've been looking forward to. If you wear a mask, we can still do those things.
What do you say to people who...
And it's certainly, yeah.
You know, there are some people who will say, well, they put a mask on, the germs can go through the mask and they come back through the mask either way. Therefore, I don't really need to put a mask on. I've heard that before.
Yeah, it's wrong. The masks filter out, depending on how close you are from the person and how much virus they have. I mean, it's 75% of it, at least, sometimes more. I mean, there's so many studies now that show that masks work. Hey, it's what got us through the spring, you know? It's how, you know, schools were open and how we got through that, and it's how a lot of our workplaces were able to stay open. But anyway, you cut it, wearing a mask into a store is so much better than to have to start doing lockdowns and restricting businesses. I don't want to do that, no one wants to do that. So if we just wear a mask for a few weeks, and it really is going to be, it really isn't going to be a long period. I think by the time we get to the end of September, we can talk about relaxing, that kind of stuff. That's only about a month away. Hard to believe Labor Day is only right around the corner, isn't it? But, so if we can get through the next three, three weeks or so, and masks are going to help us do that. So I just, I just want to say that. It's such a small thing to do to get you so much freedom.
Dr. Old, we have six other Commissioners here. Do you have any questions for Dr. Old or any comments on today's report from Dr. Old? They're all wearing masks, that's for sure. So, that's good news.
Yeah. Yeah, well, that is good news. But, yeah, if there's any questions. I mean, if you don't have one right now, and if you want to reach out to me at any time, you know, my email's readily available, or go through Joshua Swift, or through Chantel, or they all know how to get ahold of me, and I'm willing to talk to anyone anytime.
We greatly appreciate what you're doing. Now, Commissioner...
I might have one more question. This is Don Martin there, Dr. Old. Just before we leave you and go to Joshua, I'll ask Joshua the same thing. I'm assuming from what you've said, that you would feel very comfortable and would recommend a mask, maybe a mask mandate for at least another month or till the end of September?
I would. I would specifically call it a temporary mask mandate, because I think it's important that that word is in the communication, because some people fear that this is going to be some long-term thing, and it won't be. But yes, I would recommend that. I think it will help. I think it will help our citizens. I think it will help our businesses in the long run, because there are a lot of people who are avoiding going to places where masks aren't being worn because they would, they feel uncomfortable or unsafe. And I know, because some of these business owners have reached specifically out to me saying that masking ordinance or mandate would help them. And so, yes, I would recommend that. And I think it will help us in our hospitals get through this, because right now it's a little uncomfortable.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Thank you, Dr. Christopher Old. Appreciate the report very much. And now we're going to leave you...
My pleasure.
We're going to leave you and go to Joshua Swift at the Forsyth County Public Health Department. Dr. Swift, are you there?
Yes, I am here. I hope you can see my presentation. So we have just a brief update of where we are right now with COVID-19. We had 215 new cases today. So over the last 14 days, we've had 2,189 cases. So our average daily case count is 156 cases per day, and our percent positive in Forsyth County is tracking with the state rate of 12%. Just to give you a picture, and I assume you can see this graph, that this shows our cases per week, COVID cases per week. That last week of June, first week of July, we had 37 cases for the whole week. And you can see how drastically it went up to 1,057 cases August 8th through August 14th. So we definitely saw an increase, a drastic increase. Pediatric COVID cases by week, this is comparing the first week of August to the second week of August, and you can see the age breakdown, zero to one, two to four, five to nine, and so forth. And you can see in those age groups, and you've got to think about those 11 and under obviously don't have the option to get the vaccine. So that's a totally unvaccinated group, and that's a group that where that masking is very important. And a lot of people are, obviously, we're not seeing, you know, children go into the hospital, although that can happen, and we've seen that in neighboring counties, children spread it to the caregivers and the adults and the grandparents and the parents. So just wanted to share that information. Next, this is the slide you've all seen many times, our vaccine distribution. You know, since we have started the gift card, we've seen a drastic increase in the number of people coming through to get vaccinated for first doses, also more people coming through for second doses. We have, right now, 65% of adults 18 and over are partially vaccinated in Forsyth County. 60% of Forsyth County adults are fully vaccinated. Our goal since mid-May has been to hit 70%. That was the President's goal for July 4th for the nation. The nation didn't meet it, North Carolina didn't, and we didn't. But my goal is that by Labor Day, which that's right around the corner, we don't have much time, but we, we're going to get very close to hitting that 70% by Labor Day. And then you can see the breakdown by race and by age, you know, really focusing on 12 to 17-year-olds, 18 to 24-year-olds, and 25 to 49. We've just crossed where the majority of the 25 to 49-year-olds are vaccinated partially, but we're still not there with 12 to 24-year-olds. And again, these are, you know, this is showing 12 to 17-year-olds, that's still 60% of that population that hasn't even had one dose of vaccine. They're going to be going back to middle school and high school, plus you see the 18 to 24-year-olds are in college. So concern there. And then this is just a snapshot of Forsyth County. This doesn't speak to our outlying counties. And I think that's where we have in Forsyth County our sheer number of cases, the 215 that I just mentioned today. Yes, that's larger than neighboring counties, but if you look at the rates, and Dr. Old, I think, would agree, because he sees the numbers in Baptist Ketchment area, that their rates per 100,000 or per 10,000 are far higher than ours. I think a lot of that is because we've got a more vaccinated population. But still, people go back and forth with athletics and shopping, you know, people are in and out of Forsyth County from the region on a daily basis. This next slide from the Institute for Health Metrics and Evaluation out of the University of Washington. This is something we were all looking at very clearly last spring, when we were talking about trying to flatten the curve, which happened because of social distancing and masking and taking those precautions. But you can see, worst-case scenario, we could exceed our January peak. This is for the state of North Carolina. This is something that Dr. Zach Moore, the state epidemiologist, who I and Dr. Old know well, was on the state Health Director's, our meeting today. He reiterated that. So, you know, there is some concern that we're getting very close. We're already in those sort of February numbers of the number of cases. And what we're seeing is the greatest increase across the state and primarily here in the county is 18 to 24-year-olds and 25 to 49-year-olds. So my last slide, talking about boosters and third doses. So we're currently given a third dose for moderately to severely immunocompromised individuals. That was something that came out late last week from the federal government, the FDA and the CDC, and then DHHS late Friday gave us that guidance. So Monday morning, we saw a few people, maybe less than 10, come in, and then since then, 30 to 40 individuals have come through the Health Department on a daily basis. We have, we're processing all of our first and second doses in our conference rooms, and for that, we have 300 to 400 people coming through on a daily basis. But for individuals immunocompromised, they're going to a separate area in the Health Department, and we're handling their vaccine and their wait period where they can be in a less crowded space because they are severely immunocompromised. Recently, this, the information about the booster shots for the general population came out on, for September the 20th. We're still waiting for the go-ahead from the FDA and the CDC and DHHS, so it's got to go through all those approvals. Our plan right now is working with the hospital systems, and, you know, there's more vaccine available now. There's over roughly 3,200 places in the state that you can get vaccine at this time. So we're a lot different than we were late or mid-December of 2020. So there's a whole lot more places to get vaccine in the area. Our plan is to offer the vaccine at the Health Department. We can handle 400 to 500 individuals per day. at the health department. We can handle 400 to 500 individuals per day, use appointment scheduling and as well as between hospitals and providers and pharmacies and other locations. So that is my brief update, and I'd be happy to...
I have a question right now, Mr. Swift, on young people 12 and under. What's the, and Dr. Oh, if you're still there, I can see you on the screen, what is the guideline that you would tell to the parents of children now? You know, the real tragic part from my perspective is that a child should get this COVID degree and be in disease and be in the hospital. What can we do about getting them shots, getting the shots quickly and make sure that their health remains stable? Either one of you can start.
Yeah, so the under 12 group, prior to all the booster talk, we were anticipating the FDA EUA for them between Halloween and Thanksgiving, probably closer to Thanksgiving. I'm hoping that all of the, now with the FDA having to look at all this booster information won't delay that because I really believe that between giving boosters to otherwise healthy adults and vaccinating our under 12-year-old kids, the kids should take priority. And when that EUA comes out, Josh and I will be talking about making sure that our children get that priority when it's authorized for them. In the interim, what I tell parents is an expect thing to having a vaccinated child is having your child wear a mask, particularly at school and other indoor areas. So if they have an indoor club or after-school activity, they wear their mask and sit down and talk to them about why it's a good idea. And don't let your kids get the old prayer pressure thing on you about it. Keep wearing it. And then modify a little bit how you as a family might do things. If you want to go out and have dinner all together as a family, find a place that does it outside and stick with outside activities for fun. And most kids like being outside anyway. And, you know, until things quiet down a little bit, you might want to avoid places that are crowded, such as, you know, a children's museum with a lot of kids playing or something. So just modify your activities until we can get them vaccinated. But I do think it's safe for them to go to school, and I think it's safe for them to go to school on a masked way.
Josh, your thoughts on the matter?
Yeah, I agree with...
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I cut out. I agree with Dr. Oh. I think it's a multi-layered approach. It's not so much eliminating activities, it's modifying activities. You know, like you said, going out to eat and trying to do that outdoors, go to, if it is an indoor activity, trying to do that at times when it's less crowded. And like I said, I see that myself. I have a child that's under 12 that can't get the vaccine yet, and we're having to modify our activities to keep him safe.
Yeah, Josh and I both have excellent credentials on this because we both have kids under 12.
Now, to do this, do you just come to the public health department or do you make an appointment to come in?
At this point, for the third dose for moderately to severely immunocompromised individuals, you can just walk in.
Good. Commissioners, do you have any questions or thoughts or comments?
Yes, Chairman, I do. I wanted to say, Dr. Oh and Joshua, thank you for your comments today. I appreciate that. However, I still think, well, I'm still concerned relative to the Black and Brown communities. And to see that we're only at 35% with fully vaccinated is still concerning to me. One thing that I will do, and I know that you guys have been in the trenches for months now, and I appreciate the work, but we can do better. I believe that there is opportunities there, and whatever we need to do, we need to be more creative. I know that we were utilizing the gift cards and they ran out, so we probably need to relook at that. Being open on Saturdays and Sundays and partnering, continuing to do more partnerships as well. So it's not a criticism, but I think that there's opportunities for us to do more. And I just want us to keep reaching so that we can get in the rear view of this pandemic. So thank you for allowing me to share my comments.
Additional comments?
Thank you. If I could just say, Commissioner McDaniel, thank you. The gift cards, that was from the state and the federal government. So as those shipment came in, our demand was so high that we were not able. We wanted to give those gift cards as soon as we got them. And now we have, we should have an ample supply to get us through this program runs through the end of August. So we should have an ample supply and possibly going into the first week or two of September. And we're constantly trying to make the vaccine available, whether it's ours at the health department or going to different churches and organizations and events throughout the community.
I do have a question for Dr. Oh. Dr. Oh, do you have any suggestions that you could share with the Black and Brown community relative to the vaccinations? Any thoughts?
Boy, I've tried a lot of things. Excuse me. The big thing, I think, is having proponents of vaccine who are in a trusted relationship with people in the community. And so it really gets down, it really gets down into the grassroots. And that can be through a place of worship or a church, or it could be through a civic club or a sports community, or even, you know, even in a barber shop or in a place of business or just talking to people. I, you know, in my own workplace here, I've really reached out to people of color, and they all know me and they all grab me down in the cafeteria or in the hallway and ask me how it's going. And I'll say, hey, you been vaccinated yet? And they said, well, I still have some concerns. And I said, well, let's talk about it. And let's, you know, ask me your questions. And it really comes down to these kind of human interactions. And I think people can reach out to their physicians and/or where they have access to healthcare. But we, in public health and our medical systems, have to be patient, have to keep up access, and just have to keep up the messages. Because I think particularly in the community of my colors, my perceptions are, is that there's more vaccine hesitancy because of questions and concerns and anxiety. And it's not as much belligerence, which frankly, we see sometimes in other areas. So, but I, you know, I really think that's just the best way. It comes down to individual interactions between people.
Additional questions or comments?
Just one question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Joshua, Dr. Oh. Joshua, the mobile units that we have at the health department that are going out to some of the senior citizen sites, et cetera, can you employ those to go into the African-American and Brown communities on a more focused port?
Yes, we can definitely look into that, Mr. Elamene. I mean, we have, you know, just as an example, this past weekend, I mean, obviously, we were at, we were, one, we were at Cook's Flea Market, which had a great turnout. And I would say 95% of the turnout were African-American or Hispanic population. We saw, and over that last weekend, over almost 300 individuals came out at several events that we were at. And we are using the one mobile unit, we use it for reconstitution. We've taken it to Boma Gray Stadium. We've taken it to churches in the community as we go out. And we're constantly trying to search for more ways to get out into the community, especially in our areas where there's historically marginalized population.
Thank you, Josh.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Oh and Mr. Swift, for these words of wisdom. And I say that in all seriousness because it takes somebody like Dr. Oh to say, when somebody comes up and says, well, you know, I still have some worries about that. You don't have any worries once the FDA and everybody else says you got to do it if you want to. The last thing you want to do is end up on a ventilator in the hospital, and they're getting a place where you don't have that much room, right? Okay. Well, thank you very much, Joshua Swift and Dr. Christopher Oh, for spending almost 30 minutes with us. It's been a very good report. Thank you, sirs. We're coming up on a public hearing now, and I remind everyone in our government room here that if you would like to speak publicly in addition to the telephone calls we're going to take, if you haven't filled out a card, which you can find in the lobby, and given it to the lady to my right, Angela Ashley Sloop, she's prepared and ready to rock and roll with that. And if you've got the number, 422-1200, you can give us a call. Now, let's begin. First item on the agenda, the public hearing, to consider the expenditure of county general funds for an economic development project with Nature's Value Incorporated. The first speaker is standing up, Kyle Haney, who is our Community and Economic Development Director. What's the good news, Kyle?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Happy to bring this project to you. Just as a reminder, the last two briefings, it was code name only, but today, before the public hearing, we revealed the name. So the company is Nature's Value. They're a global manufacturer of vitamins and nutritional supplements, founded in 2001 and currently headquartered in Corham, New York. They have over 300 employees. They have a manufacturing facility in Davidson County as well as their main facility in New York. And they are considering the consolidation of the headquarters and manufacturing, looking at Whittaker Park here in Forsyth County. The other locations they are considering are New York, South Carolina, and Virginia. So looking at this project from the incentive standpoint for the county, looking at a standard project, it's $21.7 million in total capital investment, 263 full-time jobs. That would be the consolidation with an average wage of $46,377. If we were to support this with a standard county incentive of five years, 50%, the total incentive would be no more than $327,444. Here's a look at how that breaks out over a five-year period, and then looking at after the incentive's over, additional $380,000 over the next five years. The state did announce that they were supporting the project with a $1.9 million. J Dig Grant and the city of Winston-Salem also approved incentives in the amount of $264,592. And I was going to mention that the CFO for the company was unable to be here today, but I do believe he's called in for the general public session. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Kyle? Comments? Deep, serious thoughts? Okay, thank you, Kyle. This is a public hearing, and speakers will have up to 15 minutes total to speak in favor of this request and up to 15 minutes total to speak in opposition to the request. Is there anyone in this room wishing to speak in favor of the request? If so, will you come forward? All we want you to do is give your name and address. Take your time. Good to have you with us.
Good afternoon, Chairman Plyler, Vice Chairman Martin, and members of the commissioners. It's great to see you in person. Thank you for allowing us to be here with you today. My name is Marco and CEO of Greater Winston-Salem Inc., 411 West Fourth Street. We're so excited to bring this project to the commissioners. You've been a big influence in this project as it's been going on, and it's taken some time, but we are honored to bring this before you for consideration. As the commissioners, you have the last vote of this process, and hopefully that this will be a positive vote to be able to help bring this company and bring their headquarters here to Forsyth County. I want to say that Bob Lee at Whittaker Park have done a great job partnering with Greater Winston-Salem Inc. And as you put forth a charge to our organization about a year and a half ago, we're excited to bring projects in front of you and this being one of those. Today, our Senior Vice President of Economic Development, Laura Lee, is with us as well. Laura's going to just say a few words. And I want to say a special hello to Eric, who's listening in from New York as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. And we are thrilled to be in front of you this afternoon. As Kyle shared, we are so glad that this project will create such a significant number of jobs, 263, with the average wage of $46,000, just a bit above that. And we're also glad that it's within a target industry that we've been focusing on, which is healthcare and life science. And so taking that into Whittaker Park and adding to the other announcements we've had in Whittaker Park over the past year or so, we're just really excited about bringing that momentum and continuing that momentum in our county. And the city council did unanimously approve the incentives on Monday. So we were grateful for that support, and we are grateful to have Eric Billings, the CFO of the company, also listening in. So I think he'll make his comments in the public session, period. But thank you again for your time and consideration.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
Thank you. Laura Lee, Greater Winston-Salem Inc., and 411 West Fourth Street.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else who would speak in favor of the request? Do we have anyone who would speak in opposition to the request? If not, I will declare the public hearing closed. Do we hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the Economic Development Incentive Package for Nature's Value Inc. Be great to have another headquarters here in Winston-Salem. And I certainly hope that the package that the state of North Carolina and the city of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County, assuming approval, will be sufficient to attract them here.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Don Martin, second by Commissioner Gloria Horsenhut. All in favor of the request, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Folks, I'm glad you came in. Worked out very well. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes for the July 29th meeting of 2021. Do I hear a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Don Martin, second by Commissioner Fleming Elamene. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ashley Sloop, Clerk to the Forsyth County, Board of Commissioners, do we have any telephone calls for the public session?
Mr. Chairman, we do not have any phone calls, but we have eight speaker cards.
Do we have in-person requests for speaking?
We have eight speaker cards.
And we'll remind everyone that you get three minutes. I'll do the timing here, and I'll just turn it over to you, Mrs. Sloop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first speaker will be Joy Williams. Please come to the podium and state your address for the record.
And all speakers are asked to give their name and address for the record.
Thank you, Chairman Plyler and Board of Commissioners. I am Joy Williams, address 5059 Butterfield Drive, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27105. I am so excited to have attended the meeting that happened about two weeks ago at the Enterprise Center. And I learned there about the ARPA funds that the county will be soon releasing into the public, thanks to the federal government approval. My purpose of being here is because at that meeting, a few of us commented at the end, in which Commissioner Fleming Elamene looked at me and the executive director of the Enterprise Center, saying, please carry this forth to create a space for there to be collaboration. There are several different Black-led organizations at that meeting. And one of the concerns that we have had moving forward, as well as the excitement, is what will the commitment look like of the 80% that the Board of Commissioners have approved of these funds to go into particular qualified census tracts? The businesses that have been meeting three times a week since we met that Friday have been trying to do the application on their phones because that is the technology that they have had. And luckily, with other collaborations with businesses, we have been able to locate computer labs. But there's a fear. There's a fear of being able to complete the application, of being able to say what hearts and what projects to be put on paper and what will be used as criteria to choose the applicants. And I wanted to bring this forth to you because I work not only with Black and Brown organizations in these census tracts, but also with Spanish-speaking communities and with poor whites and within rural areas.
You have one minute.
Thank you. The barriers seem to be the same as far as language, access to the technology, and the fear that their project will be overlooked. And I'm wondering, what are some of the adjustments that we can offer? Some of the things that have been put forth in these meetings is that 80% of the surveys that are going to be used to drive the criteria of the applicants, if they don't come from the census tracts areas, to please hold that as a driver. Some of the other things is just to have a task force of people from the census tracts. And there's more. I will follow up with the email. Thank you for listening.
That was very good.
Am I done?
You finished with thirty minutes, thirty seconds to go.
Well, I love you all, and I'm so excited. It's my first time being here, and it's a pleasure, so thank you. It's a beautiful building.
Thank you for coming. Mrs. Sloop?
Our second speaker, and I'm going to apologize in advance, because I know I'm going to ruin his name, is Eberhard Müller-Hoibach.
Sir, here's your opportunity to give your correct pronunciation and your address.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about some of the equestrian aspects of the planned event center at Tanglewood Park. My name is Eberhard Müller-Hoibach. In 1989, my wife and I, our son, and four horses moved to 4099 Cradleland Road, a small horse farm next to the park. We were delighted to be next to the crown jewel of nature in Forsyth County, and as horse lovers, we were pleased to learn that there was an annual steeplechase, which we supported and we volunteered for it. We were disappointed about the poor attendance, which declined every year. In 1998 was the last annual steeplechase. Two attempts at revival in 2002 and 2010 failed. In the early 90s, there were two small, poorly attended equestrian events at the fairgrounds. This represents the totality of equestrian events during the last 32 years in public spaces in this county. Against this background, there is now an event center planned with three horse barns, an outdoor arena, a practice ring, and a 50,000-square-foot building, costing $5 million in 2016, much more now. From a fiscal point of view, this is an irresponsible waste of taxpayers' money. The current plan has two small parking areas in front of the three barns for 200 horses. The combined area is one-third less than the parking area for 200 passenger cars in front of the main building. To accommodate the pickup trucks with horse trailers and room for unloading and loading horses, this area needs to be six-and-a-half times larger.
You have one minute.
That would put the horse barns back against the backyards of the houses on Tanglebrook Trail. Their values would plummet. To accommodate this ill-conceived event center, an ugly eyesore, large areas of the nature park will have to be deforested. Large trees grown for decades will have to be cut down, and wildlife habitat will have to be destroyed. To inflict this monstrosity upon the crown jewel of nature in Forsyth County would indeed be a crime against nature. Thank you.
Very good. You used exactly three minutes. Perfect. Mrs. Sloop?
Sherri Sandy, please come forward and state your address for the record.
Sherri Sandy, 3450 Tanglebrook Trail. I hope I could do this in three minutes. This has robbed me of my sleep, of my peace, for the last, since the third week in July. Finally, this week, I just prayed to the Lord and said, I cannot battle this, or we, our friends, cannot battle this alone. The next morning, I woke up to this devotion, God is in control. Politics aren't in control. Other nations aren't. Your boss isn't. God is ultimately in control. The Bible says, the king's heart is like a stream water directed by the Lord. He guides it whenever he pleases. That's why, or that's why the world changes when God's people pray. He's waiting for us to talk to Him and surrender the burdens that are keeping us from rest. And I've rested the last two nights, because this isn't just my battle. I find it very interesting that Mr. Sanders Pratt had the insight to set up meetings and send out a questionnaire for the Blues Lake Park. I think that was excellent, which, by the way, is going to be a peaceful park for kayaking, hiking, and boating and fishing. They are keeping the land beautiful, which Duke Energy was going to cut the trees down, according to the newspaper, if they kept the property. This property at Blues Creek is not surrounded by neighborhoods or homes on every single side like Tanglewood is. I say Blues Creek, it's a win-win, because I would definitely rather have a nice park than the trees demolished. On the other hand, we have Tanglewood. Tanglewood was being pushed almost through when Mr. Watts saying he didn't think there would be any opposition. Really? No opposition? We didn't even have the choice to hear about it. Tanglewood is surrounded by homes on every single side, and we will not be brought, we were not brought into the loop of your plans until two weeks prior to hiring, or voting on hiring Shellco. Shellco definitely, I wouldn't say has anything to lose by this, but they don't have anything to gain if there isn't an event center built.
You have one minute.
I understand that there are people that want it. I'm almost sure that the people who want the center do not live near Tanglewood, or visit the park regularly, or have a financial interest. And asking you, those of you that are on the fence with this, I know there are several that are not on the fence, that are ready for this park to be built, I am asking you to listen to the people, put yourself in their shoes. The ones who don't, nobody lives in Clemens, put yourself in the people who live in Clemens, and don't let money talk. Do not build this park. And on your Park and Recreation page, it says, "Tanglewood is rich, is rich in history, beauty, and southern charm." And it will not be that way if you build a 50,000-square-foot building and all those other things where it doesn't belong, and there will be, hopefully, a picture, I don't have it, compared to what you have looked at in other places. So, thank you.
Good job. Thank you very much. Mrs. Sloop?
Jennifer Richardson, please come forward and state your address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Richardson, and I live at 3451 Tanglebrook Trail in Clemens. I am a busy, full-time working CPA, mother of two children, and a wife, and I have very little spare time to myself. My time is very valuable to me and to the people that I report to, but I feel that this issue is extremely important and is not being heard by some of the Commissioners. I feel like, since only two Commissioners came to the Red Barn meeting the other night, that you missed out. You only got half of your objective done. You were able to let the people know your plan, finally, but the part of the objective you missed was to hear the passion and the frustrations of the citizens that you represent. I was actually extremely disappointed that there were not more people. You were not at the barn to hear the passion and the frustration, the frustration that the park will be ruined, the most frequently used green space in Forsyth County destroyed. No environmental impact study would be considered. You did not hear that no DOT traffic study has been completed, no research on how this will affect home values, some within 200 feet of where you will put the barns, and their home value studies were not done or considered, to my knowledge. And some of the enormous effect of putting this much concrete in the middle of the park that will increase flooding had not even been considered. You were also not present at the meeting to hear the cheers of the people when Mr. Watts stated, "If the people do not want this, it will not happen," and repeated it twice to the people that were at the barn. If this venue is the desire of the people of Forsyth County and is in the best interest of the people of Forsyth County.
You have one minute.
Okay. There will be open, honest, two-sided communication. I have sent multiple emails, and I've only actually spoken to one Commissioner and received very few emails back, so do not feel like we are being heard. If we are being heard, you probably would like to let that know. If this venue is a pet project of a few board members, using the vagueness of the 2016 bond referendum to fund it, then I would expect the opposite. Little communication, little research of the true impact of this facility, and no desire to listen to the citizens that you represent. Unfortunately, I believe the second. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you. Mrs. Sloop?
Linda Turley, please come forward and state your address for the record.
Hi, I'm a little nervous, so be patient. My name is Linda Turley, and I live at 3438 Tanglebrook Trail. You're seeing a theme here. I am strongly, strongly opposed to this event center in Tanglewood. My house is one of those houses. That's going to be 250 feet from those barns. Tanglewood is such a horrible location for this. The impact on our roads and surrounding neighborhoods. You posted on Facebook, on the Tanglewood Park Facebook page, that you were doing this for the community. We don't need this, nor do we want this. Clemens roads already have issues every single day. These events will be, will bring in light show-type traffic. We already have to deal with festival light traffic two months out of the year, where we have to be very creative on when and where we leave our homes, or we choose to leave not after 4:00, because we can't get back home. I have a friend of mine who lives in Asbury, who had to call hospice last December for her mother, and guess what? They couldn't reach her. That is inexcusable, inexcusable. These events, you said, in two meetings that I went to, that you would have to have 50 events a year to break even. There's only 52 weeks in a year. Clemens can't handle this. The neighborhoods can't handle this. Our roads can't handle this. This will directly impact approximately 1,557 homes that surround the park, and that doesn't even include the homes in Bermuda Run. I figured, that's Davie County, you may not worry about that. I don't know. The business owners across the street in Harris Teeter, because you say, oh, it's going to bring business in, you talk to them. They don't want it either, because they take a major hit during the holidays because of the light traffic.
You have one minute.
Thank you. The cost of building this is bad business. You claim that this is not to make money and that it's for the community. It's not going to make money, and it'll probably lose money. I have, I'm going to lose my place here. On your own website, this is listed under the Agricultural Event Center Financial Research, as you can see here. I don't know if you guys can see this. All right, does that look familiar to you all?
It's kind of sideways.
Sorry. That way?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. Okay, so, does that look familiar? This is on your website, all right? This is the four different areas that you guys were looking at. Look at the net loss on all of those, and that was from a strong fiscal year. One of those places, Western AG Center. Here's a picture of it. That's a picture of it. That's an aerial photo. Is that what you want Tanglewood to become? I don't. Nobody in Clemens does. I would think anybody in Forsyth County that goes to that park would want this to become our park. It's a beautiful park. Please don't ruin it. And my home value, I sit on my back porch, and I look at it all in my backyard, and I think this is all going to be gone. And we've put so much into that home. I go to Tanglewood to walk to get rid of the stress, and right now, I don't even want to walk back there because of the potential of what it's going to become.
You're slightly over a minute long.
All I know is that I would like for you to think about.
Good job. Thank you.
What it's doing to us.
Mrs. Sloop?
Elizabeth Kinsey, please come forward and state your address for the record.
My name is Elizabeth Kinsey. My address is 409 Herndon Drive, Winston-Salem, 27104. I am opposed to the Tanglewood project. Tanglewood is a beautiful park, and it should remain that way. Thank you.
That was quick. Thank you very much. Mrs. Sloop?
Charles Sherrill, please come forward and state your address for the record.
My name is Charles Sherrill, and I live at 115 Spillsbury Court in Clemens, and with apologies to the outlaw Josie Wales, I've come here today to give you a fair word, or a fair fight, or to get either from you. You have heard the earnest petitions of my neighbors, your constituents, as they pleaded with you not to proceed with an event center at Tanglewood, the crown jewel of the county park system. They have made good faith arguments that the project will despoil the natural environment, degrade their quality of life, and needlessly drain the county's coffers. For four years before that, you listened to their earnest petitions not to proceed with an industrial park on the park's border, and yet you still persist with that project. For my part, I will add to my neighbor's petitions that I believe that there are compromises to be had, both on the Tanglewood's event center and the Tanglewood Business Park, if you will but avail yourselves of them in good faith. Your consistent earnest petitions are our words of love and concern. They are good words, they are words of harmony and much-needed reconciliation, and I wholeheartedly endorse them. But now I must say to you my words of iron. They are addressed primarily to those of you who represent District B. You and I share the same political party, and I would assume the same broad political priorities, but your present course of action threatens my family's quality of life and the investment of time and treasure we have made in our home and in our community, leaving me with no choice but to vigorously oppose you. I will not presume to speak for my neighbors, but before I submit to the urbanization of Tanglewood Park, whether through the siding of an event center within or an industrial park without, I will make it my business to burn your hard-earned political capital relentlessly, as much as I possibly can.
You have one minute.
I will turn over every rock, expose every secret, and leave no tool of lawful opposition on the shelf. You will have these issues thrust at you in the 2022 election and every election thereafter, until a resolution is reached on both of them. Every vote you garner with either of these projects will cost you 10 at the ballot box. Those are my words of iron and my promise to you. Honorable Commissioners, let's be friends. There are compromises to be made on both of these issues. We simply need to see some good faith efforts, actual actions on your part, that show that you're listening for these people. Two of those possible things you could do would be to downzone the industrial sections of the Idles Road property, or take Site E off the table for the event center. And if you want some political space to work through these issues with the Village of Clemens or whoever, we would be happy to give that to you if you will take some concrete steps in that direction.
Very thoughtful, sir. Thank you very much. Mrs. Sloop?
Mr. Chairman, our last speaker card is for Alan Daniel. Please come forward and state your address for the record.
I'm Alan Daniel. I live at 100 Fernworth Court in Clemens. I would like to congratulate the Commissioners on the Blues Creek Park. I live within a quarter of a mile. of a mile of that park for a while and saw part of that area get clear-cut, so I think that's a win. I would also like to thank Ms. Loop for helping me as we move forward to illustrate to you what we've been trying to express to you. What you're going to see is a slideshow, and I'm going to try to document what you're seeing. So, this is walking out of the refuse area, the proposed event center site. This is what it looks like in a heavy rain. This was November 2020. You will see a picture later of what this normally looks This is walking again out of that refuse area. The site of the proposed event center would be to the right. Notice that the fence in the lowest part of the pasture is underwater. These pictures were not taken during the same rain event. These pictures were taken in February 2020. What you see in the top picture is the ticket office of Tanglewood Park. What you see to the right is where you would park the overflow, pun intended, traffic for these events. My question to you is, what are you going to tell those people who parked their car there when it's not there when they get back? Because it won't be. It takes about three to six hours for the river to look like this. What you see in the picture below that was the pastures on the other side of the road for the horses that live at Tanglewood Park. This trail, unfortunately, I couldn't sort these as I wanted, so we're just having to go at it. You will see a picture later, and I will identify it. This is the trail going through the event center area after a heavy rain in November. This is coming from the campground. The area of the event center would be to your right. In the top center of the picture is the barn. Notice the pasture.
You have one minute.
This is Tanglewood and the river. It's a little hard to see, but that line of dots along the right beside the red line are these people's houses on Tanglebrook Trail. The blue going through is the flooding. Notice that there are houses that back right up to that flood zone, okay? This is our neighborhood when it rains like this. It has happened three times in 2020, February, August, and November. You would be contributing to this problem. And this is the flooding in our neighborhood, and this map does not do it justice. The big blue area in the center is the intersection you just saw flooded. One lady's house at that intersection went three feet underwater in August of 2020.
Your time is up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mrs. Loop, and thank all of you for coming and speaking. I can assure you, we've listened to everything you said, and we appreciate you being here. That concludes our public session, unless we've had anybody call in. Have we had anyone call in? If not, I'll turn the meeting over to our county manager, Dudley Watts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon. Board members and staff and guests. We do have some business items for consideration this afternoon. We have reviewed these twice in briefing sessions and have hopefully answered all your questions, so I'll dive into it. Item four is an amendment to the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget ordinance. It increases the capital reserve fund transfer to debt service fund by $50,000 and decreases the budget reserve by $50,000 as well. You've got the associated amendment to the fiscal year budget ordinance to increase the transfer from the capital reserve fund and increase the debt service expenditures by $50,000. This essentially makes a correction to the capital reserve and the debt service fund to fully budget the debt service payments for the current year.
Comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming Elamine, second by Commissioner Don Martin. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Item five is a resolution designating the Piedmont Triad Regional Council as the lead area agency on aging for Forsyth County for state fiscal years 2023, 2024. You've got an associated resolution that authorizes submission of the fiscal year 2021-2022 Home and Community Care Block Grant Funding Plan for older adults, and authorizing us to execute those documents and submit the plan for state approval. The amount of the funding is a fairly significant amount of money. It's $1,903,347, and you see the recommendations from the funding group regarding that. And then, much like other counties in North Carolina, we do rely on the council of governments to serve as that lead area agency on aging.
Questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Tanya McDaniel, second by Commissioner Fleming Elamine. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Item six is a resolution selecting a construction manager at risk and authorizing execution of a contract for pre-construction phase services for the Tanglewood Clubhouse project. We went through the required RFQ process, and you have a recommendation to contract with Sammick Corporation for those services. It is $27,500 for those pre-construction services.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Gloria Whisenhut, second by Commissioners Ted Kaplan and Fleming Elamine. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Got three property matters. The first one's item seven. It's a resolution authorizing the execution of a lease agreement between Forsyth County and the city of Winston-Salem as joint landlords in the Winston-Salem-Forsyth County Utility Commission for the lease of county-owned property at 6315 Amp Drive. The annual rent is $5,000. It's a 20-year lease for an AMI system, which is advanced metering infrastructure, which will allow the utilities commission to get that data for the meters on using technology.
Questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming Elamine, second by Commissioner Don Martin. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Items eight and nine are both easements related to the new Colliding Museum. I think you probably can take them together. Item eight is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of easements from the city of Winston-Salem related to the construction and operation of the new museum at 120 West Third Street. They are, there are a number of different types of storm drainage, outdoor seating, water, sewer, and maintenance-type easements. And then, item nine is the easement with Duke Energy, Carolinas LLC for the Duck Bank utility easements for the utility lines to serve that property.
Comments or questions?
To approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Don Martin, second by Commissioner Richard Linville and Fleming Elamine. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Item 10 and 11 are both refund items. You probably can take these together as well. It's a resolution approving refunds by the tax assessor collecting an amount of $1,403.92 from the North Carolina vehicle tax system. And then, you've got item 11, which is approving refunds under $100 in the amount of $335.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ted Kaplan, second by Commissioner Richard Linville. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Probably should have taken item 12 with it. It's also refunds under $100.
Comments or questions?
Approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Gloria Whisenhut, second by Commissioner Fleming Elamine. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
We've got two added items that were added through the cycle. Item 13 is a resolution authorizing the county manager to modify operating hours for the Department of Public Health in response to the pandemic, essentially give a chance for staff and the facility to take a breather that is wrapped around the Labor Day holiday, so it would close the facility on the 2nd and 3rd of September.
To approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Gloria Whisenhut, second by Commissioner Tanya McDaniel and Fleming Elamine. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
And then, item 14 is a resolution appointing Clarence Lamb Jr. to serve as a voting member of the Smith Reynolds Airport Board for the remaining term of a vacant position.
Comments? Motion. Motion to approve by Commissioner Ted Kaplan, second by Commissioner Fleming Elamine. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. And that's the end of our particular agenda for today on voting. We'll take about a 10-minute break and come back with a briefing session, which will take place in 10 minutes, and then it'll be briefing, by the way, for the meeting coming up a week from today. Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Ted Kaplan, second by Commissioner Don Martin. All in favor, say aye. We adjourn for 10 minutes.